Work session for the town of Tuftonboro Friday, July 10. Members of the public wishing to attend electronically, go through your computer, tablet, or smartphone. Deal with slash slash global dot go to meeting dot com slash join slash nine nine six four three three nine four one. It'll keep them out of here. You can listen by telephone toll free, one eight seven seven three oh nine two oh seven three. Access code nine nine six dash four three three dash nine four one. Please note that you will be able to interact during public input using the online service. You will only be able to listen to the meeting via telephone. If there are any issues attending this meeting electronically, dial six oh three five six nine four five three nine. With that, we'll begin. First order of the business is to meet with Heather Cooperdo, our town clerk.
Hello?
On behalf of the town and on behalf of the selectmen, thank you for making a difference. You know, you have the entire, all the office here. Thank you specifically. Okay, and nothing but best wishes and good luck, okay?
Thank you, yep.
Okay, anything you'd like to say?
Um, I just would, hang on, I'd just like to express my appreciation to the board over all these years. Um, you know, many of you, I've been obviously known to the community and been part of, you know, church, same church community and neighbors for a long, long time. And so, um, I just hope you all know that this decision is not made lightly as far as leaving the community. So, um, but that's for me at this point as far as moving forward. And I feel like what I've tried to put in place for my departure was always with the town specimen truck. As making sure that people are available to take those roles on as I depart. And hopefully having that opportunity to do training. When I walked into this job fifteen and a half years ago, I basically was contacted by Dan Barnard after I won the election uh, because his previous town clerk used to come to the town meeting the next night to take minutes. So, I jumped in and that's how I began without any type of training or whatever else. So, um, I don't want anyone to have to go through that. Um, I think it's a lot. Try to make sure that we've got a good team of people to take on what's before. So, I know just from talking with Karen that you had some reservations about some things. So, I guess I would just happy to entertain questions or thought process. We're hoping that we can maybe work together in trying to make sure that as I part at the end of August, that everything is a seamless transition. Have it all just keep on going. So, uh, or...
Would like to speak?
Well, I guess my, I, a couple of things. First of all, we really need to post a position. We're fully in favor, I think, of a group of Jen taking over until the next election. But I think we'd be doing it a disservice if we didn't post it. Just because there's talent out there that might want to come work for us. Secondly, as you said, you walked into the job without any former or formal training. I'd like to avoid that if we could and maybe put together a notebook. There's three elections that are coming up. The primary, the general, and then the town election. And I don't know if we can solely depend on Dan to run that because you've done so much of the work yourself over the years. And we just, I don't think we want to see Jen stumble.
Mm-hmm, oh yeah, no.
There's too much in the news right now about elections.
Right, exactly. And the, you know, the good benefit of it is that she has been through two elections with me already, which is, I think, was extremely important, especially presidential primary. And that was huge. She did the majority of that work on absentee ballots, was there and polled, did that poll piece in the end of the town election. So, absolutely, I actually already started that process. I already have all deadlines and all that. She just went recently to, they finally opened up an election net training, which is our whole election system. Uh, she just went to that last Thursday. I was giving those in person and she's been able to go to that.
And are there any town clerk training sessions?
No, there's not because unfortunately she decided to go to one in April and, um, and that canceled. All of our meetings, our regional meetings, as well as our statewide meetings, both involved in canceling. Um, yeah, she's gone through all the more people.
Is there, I guess I have two things. One, you gotta know that in the general, there's gonna be a ton of absentee ballots because it just seems like that's a movement. So, hopefully she's ready for that. Is there a system of mentoring with town clerks? Or is there someone, you're gonna be quite a ways away.
Right, certainly available at any time if you have any questions or whatever else.
But I didn't know if I or not. You, you guys are all sort of a special breed that hang together and I don't know if you...
We have no confidence.
Yeah, I just don't want her to have a question unanswered and not add some resource.
Right, and, you know, the thing that I have always relied on over time, not necessarily another town clerk because everybody does things a little bit differently, but I just go right to the state. I mean, the state is a tremendous resource that we have not only for motor vehicles, but for elections. They have plenty of people and staff that are available. So, that's where I go because otherwise you get everybody's own interpretation of laws and whatever else. So, I go right to the source. So, they do provide that and they provide that as a, you know, even on election day if you have a question. They have people available, you know, around the clock.
Karen, did you have a question?
Well, I was just gonna add because, um, so, and I spoke with NHMA about this. They have said that, I think I said it to you, you probably already know, but if Jen was appointed as deputy, she automatically goes to town clerk, but the deput- because she's been appointed by the selectmen until the next election. But the deputy can be, then we fly right into the spot.
Right, I don't think we want to go out there looking for a town clerk.
Oh, I misunderstood you then, I'm sorry.
I don't know who, uh, may run in March, but I doubt it's not a really big contestant.
Okay, I misunderstood, right, sorry. Can I ask a question? Um, so, when we were getting ready to hire someone, we put it out for, we advertised it and that was last fall. We did our interviews first in November, um, so it's only been seven months. So, and started in December. So, and we only had four applicants. Four women were very well qualified and the other one, which I think Heather's already was facility, and she wasn't ready to part full-time. But, you know, um, and so I guess my question is, the others, we interviewed all four of them. One was not qualified at all, one, you know, probably could have maybe gotten into it. But why did we have to advertise it as in, um, already done?
Because between, between last November and today, we've gone from three point two percent unemployment to fourteen percent unemployment. There's talent out there maybe. And I'm not gonna sit here and say, we're just gonna shop local. Got some people that are looking for work, we're now out of work, then let them apply. Maybe nothing will happen from it, but none of us are getting any younger. I think Heather's the youngest person in the room right now, or maybe Karen is. But we need, I mean...
Right, right, I, and I do understand that. I guess the only thing that I would just say that, you know, this position is, is it a deputy for both Jackie and I? So, we both feel very strongly, and I think Jen would also concur with that, is that we always do want to hire someone that is from town. And that is primarily because if anything happens to any of us, you gotta have someone that can fly into that position. You have to be a resident. So, I guess I would say if that's something you feel strongly with as far as opening it up, would you, I just would ask that maybe it not be as long of a time period as we did the last time as far as advertising it, putting it out, having it as fairly quick time? Only just because we would need the time and then, you know...
The sooner we get them on board, the more time they have to return over.
Exactly, they'll have more time they'll have. Um, I've already contacted the state in regards to what they were gonna be doing because, of course, you have to understand DMB is not open to the public yet. So, they're in the process of trans, um, creating like an online training for people. Normally for DMB, you have to actually go there for a four-day training, as required before you can use the motor vehicle system. So, you know, I'm trying to work with that too as far as how that works, whether some, you know, if they require that it has to be a computer, that it's a town computer, whatever, we can figure that out. But it's time consuming, that's my only concern. So, um, I, you know, the one thing I will say in regards to Priscilla is that, like Jackie said, she does have a great number of qualifications. Um, she has already been, you know, working for the town for both early before and the only reason she left was to take care of her mother who had a severe stroke. So, which she is still currently doing, but now is trying to get extra, you know, help for her mom so that she can get out and work again because it's important for her. So, um, I have offered her resume and her references and all that if you would like to be able to take it and to look at it as well and whatever else you can get from there. Um, I, now however you want to handle that, we...
So, the advantage to re-advertising is we make it a larger pool of qualified applicants. The disadvantage is that from the time that we review and go through the selection process, that the transition time gets very compressed, right?
Right.
Or we lost a week of advertising.
Right, right. Right, so, um, I have all the information from advertising for Jen, so I can certainly do that. Um, so...
Well, we've got two candidates that live in Genafly, were qualified. Let's reach out to them and find out if they're... I mean, the other thing we've got is, I mean, it's sort of a, a group problem. We've got you leaving, but we also had Mrs. Bean deciding that she couldn't work in a public office anymore. So, we need to fill a couple of positions, actually.
Secretary to the police, yeah.
Yeah, and also, yeah, also the secretary.
Oh, we have some, at least there's one to fill, but that doesn't necessarily mean we throw everything in one pot.
Right, right.
Right, but if we can get a pool of applicants in here, then we've got a number of jobs that we've gotta fill and we can talk to all of them. And I think that maybe it gets compressed, maybe it, maybe it's, I don't think it's gonna be an issue. Maybe Priscilla gets the job. I just, I don't think we're doing our due diligence if we just, you know, hire somebody who knows somebody. Which is that.
I, I disagree because I think that we put it out there. And we don't want someone from out of town with that, but we had before, we had people that...
Well, I'm not saying somebody from out of town, but I'm not gonna, it just gets a little too incestuous. We need to at least reach out to our local community and see if they're available, that's all.
I agree, but let's not consolidate the other two jobs with this one.
No, 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 but let's say somebody comes in and they don't work out for Assistant Tax Director. They might work out for police.
That's right, but, right, I think we should actually basically, um...
Right, yeah, I think we just best...
They are separate.
As making separate apps, right.
Right, right.
Yo, did I give you an opportunity to speak?
Um, so would you be willing to at least just have it be like a kind of a two-week turnaround time as far as putting it out there for advertisement?
Nothing for advertisement, but as far as, you know, you wanna get in the grand state.
Yeah, I mean, today is Friday.
Well, I think if we did it honestly today, it would all end Thursday.
So, we don't have to put it in the news, we don't have to put it in newspapers, right? You could put it on the, on the town website, you could put it on the NHMA website, get that up today if we wanted to look at that with a quick turnaround and not go through the piece with the newspaper that...
Well, I think, yeah, I'll be very honest with you. The people that heard about it were people who aren't in the newspaper, so, right? As far as I know anyways, last time around, except for maybe one person. So, I mean, even if it was out there digitally, I guess, or electronically, and then one week in the grand state, that was that acceptable to everybody or...
Yeah, that's fine, I think we just need to get some.
Okay.
I mean, if somebody's looking, they're gonna call.
Yeah, okay.
So, if we have the, if it got in the papers today for next week, next week is the sixteenth. Given so, twenty-four?
Yeah, and then we'll review them on the twenty-seventh and make a decision.
For the twenty, but, um, well...
We can review them on the twenty-four and then call them up and see if we can, we interview some.
So, this, let me, well, Jen's here for some of the work that we wanted. I'm thinking of Monday, she's open, so she might not wanna take the time to do it. And I know the rest of you are retired, so probably you do it another day, like you do today.
We could do it on Tuesday. Well, that's something you guys can decide as well. I mean, we don't have need to decide at the second, but we don't wanna, I don't know that it's gonna serve our purposes to just have these three guys interviewing. I mean, that doesn't make any sense.
No, 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 yeah, I mean, would it just be one of you and then Jackie and Jen pretty much? I mean, or, I mean, I can be part of the two, but, I mean, ultimately it comes down to the two of them working someone.
Yeah, let's just form a committee of you and Jackie and Jen and one of us. And then the selectmen will just make the recommendation to the board of, of work.
Sound like a plan?
Yeah, that's easy.
So, I guess, and the only thing, other things that I would just put out there, um, you did see in my note too, obviously, that, um, I don't know if you're familiar, but underneath our personnel policy established many years ago, um, Jackie and I were grandfathered in regards to insurance at the time. So, you do know that going forward, I mean, Jen is aware, she doesn't, unentitled to insurance. That is a piece that budgetarily I will be thinking about. I would just also let you know too that I had to make a quick transition. My insurance, they'll be paying my insurance for the next two months to discontinue my insurance in order to change over to New York or whatever else. So, there is a little bit, not that you care too much about dating, but there is some dating that is there. Part of that's concerned.
Well, I, I care more about a transition for you than actual dollars and...
Yeah, no, I know, I appreciate that, it's just, uh...
Right, or circumvent.
Yeah, so, I, I'm just not allowed to carry too, too insurance based on the other insurance, so that's all that. But, um, and then the only thing I think you just need to be thinking about is that, um, as far as going forward with salary, as far as Jen is concerned, um, you know, right now, the position based on, you know, all the work that had been done in the past with our, all the wage and benefits, whoever did that.
Yeah, but I don't know that the elected officials didn't land on that.
Yeah, we are actually on the matrix.
Oh, yeah?
So, yep, and, um, my, yeah, my particular position is, is a grade twenty. Um, currently on that like a step nine. Um, I would think that you would look at that grade twenty and start with your first or second step. Jen certainly is somebody who has, you know, education and she worked in the hospitality and all that kind of business for a very long time. So, um, you know, I'll leave that for you to kind of talk, but that would be kind of my recommendation as far as that concern. I mean, that's two, which is...
How do you can do that? I mean, I'm baffled by how that happened. I mean, elected officials, you get a set salary. It's determined by the budget. And if you start going into this wage and step, you're, you're dancing on the edge of benefits. I mean, why you wouldn't get benefits if you're in the wage and step system, I don't know. But I'm, I'm a little baffled by it, but I'll, I'll work my voice around it.
Time to review it.
Not full-time or that way? Because not full-time means?
Town clerk doesn't, town clerk doesn't ever have to come to work. I mean, she could come to work one day a month and satisfy, there's, I don't think there's any statutory requirements that...
No, there's, one day a month, if you're going to work two hours a month, it's only, it's very...
Fall in.
There, there are statutory requirements of, that has, have to get done.
Right, right, exactly, right.
And practically, there's no way to do it.
You might not get re-elected, but you mean, I would say, yeah, no, but technically, right, I mean, we don't...
So, to premise the salary and, and/or benefits on a certain amount of work hours doesn't make any sense.
No.
I mean, I don't know how we do with Jackie, she works, what, three hours a week?
Yeah.
No, forty-five minutes, I think, right?
The problem with Jackie is she doesn't let out any information, so we're gonna have to get her a lobotomy so we can...
I know, really, geez, bro, yeah.
Well, I think we might...
Well, that's an issue that we need to, as a board, we need to look at.
Because I'd rather...
I mean, I'm aware that that's the way it's, it's run and it's...
Examinations.
Yes, and exceptions to the way the statutory system is set up, but...
And we're not on the wage and step.
No.
And we're elected, you know? The road agent isn't on wage and step, but he's elected. They, he sets a budget number for his services.
Right, and that's what I do.
And that's what you do.
And when I'm gonna pass it in, it's like, well, what step and what level are you? And it's like, I don't know. He told me I could get this much more money, you know, this, there it is. And so she always has to plug it in, you know?
Yeah, it's, that's...
All right, we'll look at that.
So, that's, that's another piece, that's a separate piece of work to try.
And the retirement?
Never had that retirement, no.
Really?
Neither one of us have.
But why Jackie's still working?
We don't, everybody thinks we're gonna get a million dollars, right, if any of them want.
Right, we don't, uh...
Well, you can steal a million.
We try, we try.
And some have done that, and they've got a lot.
It has worked out well for them, so...
You're not, yeah. Was it your, a choice not to join the retirement system?
No, we don't have enough hours that we've worked, so we don't make it since retirement. There are town, you know, there are town clerks and tax clerks that are in the National State Retirement, but they have to work a certain number of hours, and we, we don't.
Forty hours, thirty-five.
Well, there are a number of towns that have a combined position, and maybe that's how they do it. It then becomes a full-time job.
Right.
Uh, the only thing is during tax season, what the heck happens? The registration thing?
They got free check...
Yeah, well, yeah.
It's usually what happens, so, yeah.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
So, um, stepping back with respect to Jen, is there any other trainings that, uh, she would benefit from now that are available?
Um, there aren't anything that are, are available. Um, he had, I, the best part about Jen is that she's been able to do, be here and do, do the job and be able to have me be able to, you know, train her and just be hands-on. I, personally, I think the best way to learn is to be hands-on. Um, she has, you know, is more than open to do reading and all that, which she has been doing as well. So, um, you know, even with our COVID times, it's actually, even though we weren't always here at the same time, we were sometimes, but it was kind of nice without being interrupted completely by customers so we could go over some other things. But she's gone on and done everything as far as, I don't know, it helps me with both of those reductions, learning all the ins and outs of that, um, doing all the motor vehicle stuff. I mean, you'll never be prepared for all that because every time you could have some sort of new situation, they change the law, whatever, but she's done, you know, inventory with me. She's, you know, ordered new supplies, I mean, it's all...
And you do a monthly accounting, uh, Diane gives the numbers?
Uh, my, my numbers are entered every day as far as my cash receiving is concerned. So, yeah, and she does all that, closing out, you know, starting of the day. She's been here by herself, um, you know...
She knows how to generate reports and all that?
Yep, as far as all that's concerned, and how to, how to generate those reports, how to... So, you know, and, you know, I, I've always have told her even going forward, I certainly am always being a resource to her no matter what, ever she needs. But I am in the process of putting everything in writing to the best you can so that she has that, she'll...
Well, it's good to... You're not gonna change your phone number without telling her.
I am not gonna change my number.
It's a good, it's a good to produce things to writing. I mean, Jackie never will, but she should because you never know. I mean, let's say the, the COVID thing happens, all of a sudden you lose, you lose three or four people. I mean, our staff is so minimal that it could be a real...
Absolutely, yeah. It, it is important, so I've been trying to do all of that as, as we go along.
You can lose a selectman, one after another, doesn't matter, but this is what actually is gonna work.
And Jen is a quick learner, you know, like, one time you tell her how to do this, act, collect, or whatever, and she comes later and she's touching it again, she's...
And does she fully understand deferrals?
Oh, do you?
I do.
It's a selectman issue, she doesn't have some to handle.
Do you have another appointment? I would think you...
You're welcome, I appreciate it. And we'll be back in touch with you when we, yeah.
Great, thanks again, man.
Thanks, yeah.
Are we ready for our next appointment?
Yep.
How long, how long do we wanna spend on this subject, folks? We wanna be here hours and hours?
No.
No?
No, I don't think we need to be, I, I know what I need. I'm sure you guys know what you need.
Yes. Let's go.
Can you get the big drive? Do you have a eagle in it? Do you have any eagle or anything?
No, I have the eagle, I'm like, yeah.
Good morning, John.
Hey, what?
Hi.
How are you?
Good, thanks, too.
Welcome back. Welcome back, Connor, here's the first.
If you're comfortable with it, I always say this because I've had a couple of comments from the public that listened in, if you're comfortable with it and you're far enough away, do you mind moving your mask and your teeth? But only, that's up to you. Whatever you think, but I didn't know people were comfortable with it.
Well, you have a cry this way, do you wanna begin or does someone here wanna begin? Jeff, you wanna begin?
Well, no, I have, um, filter for a bunch of questions, um, or comments, I guess, from, from the meeting that we had on Monday. The, uh, point I was trying to make is that the design as it stands, has already been presented to the public, and it's not gonna fly.
Understood.
So, we've gotta change it. So, if there's resistance to changing, then we might as well not have conversations because it's not gonna pass town meeting. We're not gonna have enough money to pay for it in one year, so we're gonna have to have a two-thirds majority to pass any sort of borrowing. And I think it's just a matter of finding four or five hundred square feet and rearranging some spaces. We've got fifty-plus thousand bucks in a warrant to design this, so I don't think there, there's not a problem with, uh, we're paying for it. But I, I think if we don't make a move away from just justifying the, the, the design as it stands, we're not gonna get anywhere.
I don't think, I wouldn't say it's, I mean, I can't speak for the chief, obviously, but, but I don't think it's so much a resistance to take out square footage. I do think that it's not gonna be an accurate summation that taking out four or five hundred square feet is gonna save at that same square foot rate that you might have come up with for the whole building. Obviously, we, the expensive spaces, which bring the price of the building up, there aren't, are the spaces that are necessary. The bathrooms, the lockup area.
So, if we take inexpensive square feet away, then the average price goes, per square foot goes up because the, the expensive square feet...
I don't know, here, here's, let me jump in. So, from my perspective, here's, here's what we're facing and, uh...
So, from my perspective, here's, here's what we're facing, and, uh, we know from experience that, that the opportunity to get a bond issued pass, construction in this town is, and, and in most towns, but particularly here, is a very, very heavy lift. Uh, and as we went through this process, we're hopeful that we could be in a position that with a single-year payment and the money that we had set aside, you know, the grant money, that we would be able to, to move it along and get it done. Um, right now, we have, uh, like, a little over six hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the capital reserve fund. Uh, I, I can't give you an exact, because I know what it was in last year, we put another hundred and fifty in, or we are putting another hundred and fifty in this year. So at six eighty, um, my opinion is that we can, that in a single-year payment, we could probably go neighborhood of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is what we did with the library, give or take a little bit, plus grant money.
How much is the grant? I thought that was six.
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Two hundred and fifty?
Right, so basically, that, that puts us at a million and a quarter, give or take. So, from my perspective, if we wanna do it in twenty twenty-one, and, and I'm all for doing it as soon as we can, we need to figure out if we can do it for that kind of money, because if, if we can't do it for, I mean, in, in a quarter-ish, um, then my view, the option is we say, we're not, we're not gonna bring it to town meeting in twenty twenty-one. We're gonna put a, a big chunk aside with the idea that with a big chunk the next year, we can get it done. And that's just my, that's, that's just my look at it, I'm, that's not necessarily the board's position, but as I look at it, even if we reduce the size of it, and, but we still have to go for a bond or a loan to get it done, even though money is cheap, that two-thirds threshold is, is extremely difficult to reach, and I am not at all confident that we would, we'll go through the exercise, get it all priced out, we get everything ready to go, we get sixty-two percent, we need sixty-seven percent approval at town meeting, and it just, it's for another year.
Yeah, and we're stuck in the same position of having two warrant articles, in case the building fails, we wanna have a capital reserve warrant article.
So, um, that's, um, maybe, and again, my focus at this point is, how do the, how do the dollars pieces work to get it done? Um, and not, and, and is there a way that we can get dollars there, or are we smarter to say, you know, the requirements are the requirements, and take a few hundred square feet out, and it drops, it drops the total package cost, but, but not by enough to get to where we need to be? Uh, yeah, I guess I, I agree with your financial assessment.
Right. But politically, I don't think we're moving until there's change. People who are not gonna vote for this have to have their minds changed that we've actually done something, some effort to address their concerns. And their concerns weren't a hundred percent money, part of it was size and scope. So we need to at least, say, juggle the rooms around and change some square footage a little bit, just to say they would put them up for a better deal.
So, so part of the, part of the size concern, I think, all comes back to money. Now, part, part of it may be, yeah, it seems like we have a lot of extra spaces here, uh, and, uh, and, and clearly has to be addressed in terms of, and, and it's, we've gone through studies in the past, and we've ended up with, um, coming up with, um, about the same size facility as the previous studies have, uh, have suggested. Is, is there a way to be more space efficient without adversely affecting the functionality?
I think you can certainly tighten it up, I'm not sure if the, the numbers are gonna be as much as five hundred square feet, but, but before we kinda iron that out, can we look at, I mean, look at all the options for extra financing? Uh, that calculation didn't include the E O C grant funds available. Um, I know that, and I don't remember, I can't give you an exact number, but when we did the, um.
So, so that's an, that's a separate grant from the one that we're, we're getting out.
Right, and it's.
That's fine.
So it's basically pays for, it'll pay for the generator, it'll pay for all the electronics in the E O C, it'll pay for the construction of the entryway, um, the some, basically, that's what the, one of these shadings on the drawing was, um, you'll be able to include in the grant amount, the construction of the, of these spaces.
Um, how do we jumpstart that process on the E O C grant?
We can certainly get that rolling, obviously, there's gonna be a fair bit of.
Do you have a conservative estimate on what you're looking for, Grant?
Um, I'm trying to remember what we got for.
What was it, Thornton?
Um, I, it was a much smaller facility, much smaller spaces, it was an existing building, so there was a lot less that could be attributed. It was more of renovation costs as opposed to build costs, and I'm pretty sure it was over a hundred and fifty.
So, so can we get the grant process going before we have the design, all the design work finished?
Yeah, I'm not sure about the confirmation of what you would get, um, that.
But there's some sort of formulaic thing that determines that.
Right, I mean.
That, I mean, that, that's another piece from the money to, to this whole thing, uh, and, uh, we're making sausage.
Yeah, I mean, if we, if we. We gave it a couple hundred thousand dollars there, and if they were free for you at town meeting, they were a million five. And we're not at your top number with your solar and all the rest of that, but we're.
With your add-on, you can put the superstructure, I mean, you can put the infrastructure into that and do it at a later date, right?
Well, and, you know, one of the things about solar, that, in terms of an approach that makes sense, is you do, you do at least with a private company for that. You do a, a power purchase with them, because the carrots all go to people that pay taxes. And that's, and that's why setting up with a private company that makes the investment, that gets all the tax credits, uh, financially works better for a government.
I guess the caveat to that is, the only deals that I've seen like that, you're still paying your same electric rate while they're, that five-year, whatever period. There's really no benefit to that, when we're the buyer of the town. So they're getting a twenty percent, or whatever, so you're paying, they're, they're hit a tax break, and.
And, and you're paying less for the electricity than you would be directly.
That would be okay.
Right.
Yeah, it's not market value, it's not free, but it's not market value.
Right, right.
It's okay, so that's a deal that I haven't seen much.
Yeah, yeah, so you, you.
In Effingham School, uh.
You, you, you pay, you pay less for the power than market value. You don't, you get all the benefit that you would if you owned it, but you also don't have all the other expenses, so. Chief, would you like to speak?
Well, I thought the school district did that in Effingham.
Right, yes. They were inventing the wheel up, so let's watch.
I'm not sure their wheels are round enough, I don't have to work at that letter.
Please, sir.
That was, that was just it, you were talking about this, and I just.
But again, we.
No, no, but Effingham has sent us a letter about school funding.
Oh. But no, I'm saying the school district did it at the Effingham School, I believe.
Oh, that's a project we're doing this year.
The school district, not Effingham Town of, but it was on the warrant article.
The school, yeah.
And the other thing is that the legislature has put in a bill that has passed, I don't know what's gonna happen with it, because it did it in a Christmas tree-type bill, but one of the things is changing the sixty-six and two-thirds down to sixty percent, as it is with the S P two towns. But who knows what that's gonna end up being, because it, but it's part of a Christmas tree bill, so there might be some reasons to pass that that makes it happen, but.
Any other comments? So I, I, you, you had, Phil had, uh, kinda recapped the process that you normally use in terms of getting input like this. We've had some conversations about, gee, these are things to, to look at including, um, and I, I think, if I can, I don't wanna mischaracterize, but your appro, maybe you can kinda recap for us the approach that you normally use in terms of going from this design proposal to getting input to, to, to working further with it, rather than, we sit down, a few people say, let's do this, do this, or this, you revise it, you come back with the next one, somebody says, no, let's mark this up, you keep jumping.
Right.
What has worked well for you guys in terms of the input to the change, to the design process, to, to the final design?
Right, I, I think there's, there's a concern that you end up chasing your own tail if you're, if you're trying to do multiple meetings and, and react to every comment that was made at each of those meetings in between the meetings. So, um, we, and, and as far as I know, this is how other people, if you're doing a charrette, it's different, because you sit down for a day or whatever, and everybody's scratching out comments and changes, and then there's, that's taken back and it's revised, and that's it. If you didn't show up to that charrette, then your comment, your, the opportunity to comment is kinda fast, but that's not feasible here, so it makes sense to have numerous, um, during the pandemic, so, you know, people, so it makes sense to have numerous meetings to give different people opportunities. It's just, if we're gonna try to change the drawings between each of those meetings, it, it does cause some problems, and we could be going in circles.
So some, so perhaps a way, as we go through and have another information session, that sort of thing, some mechanism that we can capture the input without actually changing the drawings, so that we can say, all right, here's, here's, here's the design that we talked about at town meeting. Since that time, these, this input has been offered and, and is under consideration, but we haven't changed the, all the lines on the drawings, because, once we get further down the input road, then we'll incorporate all of that, is that?
Right, and, and then at that point, the select board, I would presume, and who else has the authority, has to decide, okay, we've, we've considered these points already, we can't incorporate that any further, these points are valid, and you're, you're gonna have to prioritize all these comments and decide what we can progress with and what is, has already been addressed as much as possible. And then those revisions are changed, and that would be presented, and certainly, there would, maybe after that, I believe you're gonna have three information sessions, right? So after that third session, you even post all the comments, so if, if somebody wants to read, read those posts, read that post, and, and have additional comments, they have a waiting period where they can send them in one way or another. Um, and then, as, as a team, design team, we all have to come to some agreement on what we're gonna react on, and what we, and what is not feasible. Um, and, and that's generally how it happens, when you're gonna do numerous sessions like this.
All right, so we've got one more meeting scheduled, I think, for police department, this study, I don't know if it's scheduled, but it's certainly.
I thought there was something in August, I thought there was a date, but we changed things because it.
I know, the COVID pandemic.
And maybe even posting the comments before the next meeting, so if people see that, well, I have this concern that hasn't been voiced, I'm going to this meeting, um. Right, I was just trying to short circuit the, the minute, where you could get down to the, the real, maybe, griddy of.
All right, well, I apologize, but if, if at the end of the day, let's say it's September, whatever, and we've got all our meetings done and all our comments made, and we can actually sit here and say, okay, these changes need to be made, what kind of square footage can we affect?
Right.
What's the cost difference, and where do we end up? Then we've got something new to present, something, well, or, or something added.
Right.
To present, that's, that's been my goal.
And, and, and that would be already included in the contract that you've approved already, the numbers that were already approved, because we would, we are, are clearly included some further schematic design work in that final contract, which, which we haven't proposed yet, and we thought there was gonna be further delays. But, um, if, if you think it's gonna move forward, we'll all just be getting that to you ASAP. Um, but that would be the, that was the, the process that we had anticipated, and therefore we've allowed for that schematic phase each round, it starts to get very time-consuming, especially, and then we could be actually going backwards from one design, because other comments were more vociferous about, well, we don't like that, um, the previous one was better, or whatever, it just becomes.
Well, I think we can wait all the comments the same, other than my comments, which should be all powerful, but they are.
Yeah, you can have one voted, it's, it's whether it's voted.
It's like when the yellers come in here, and they yell and scream, they're one thirty-five-hundredths of the people that run the town.
Yeah.
Elected, or the, or the voters. So I don't care if somebody yells louder, although I thought Phillips was reasonable, I guess he hadn't had his morning cocktail.
I have a couple of comments, if I can, wait in, it'll take about four minutes. First, it's you two gentlemen, thank you. Before I vote for any contractor, before I hire anybody, I go to the communities where they've worked and done business. I went to three communities that you've worked with, Devon was the first one. Last question I always ask is, knowing what you know now, would you hire Karen? I asked the same question about you and your firm, knowing what you know now, would you hire this company back again? And all three were quickly yes, and two said, well, you put it in writing, so fellow, thank you. I have complete confidence in you, uh, anytime I've asked you a question, you give me a straight answer. The next thing is, Chief, I've watched you for over thirty years. I was there at the Verizon when you were on it as a hero, knowing people from New Durham, they, when you came here, the chief told me, you lost a good man, Tufton Broke, got a good person. We'd have these conversations. I watched you work on the latest committee with Bob and Jeff, and you put them in contact, and they learned from the mistakes they made in Boltonborough, Agbri, and where were some others? Uh, I don't have them all like this, but you set them up, and you said, guys, go down there and learn, and you didn't hang around and said, and whisper in your ear. I have reviewed this plan. This plan was set up so if the library became available, build a garage, or if you wanna put it across the street or someplace else. I have, I've also gone through every single room and taken the I A C P manual, and I made the comment the other day when people were talking about records, you need a minimum of five hundred square feet that are, that are secure, and you need seventy feet for every employee full on time there, that they generate in a year, they generate about seventy square feet of, uh, reports that have to eventually be filed. And I didn't mention, and you know this, if someone comes into a fiscal government, or if someone comes in for insurance reports, you gotta be able to go get it. You didn't even mention that. I'm telling my close, like. You didn't even mention that. I'm telling my close, like, in there now, I have absolutely no problem with the space requirements. For example, the classroom, I have not gone to a library, a fire department or a police department who said that they made the multipurpose room, that's what they call it, big enough. When you had a raid with Dr. Sharp up here at the beginning of your career, you had to have a command post someplace. That classroom could have been used. The two people who were murdered down in, in Wolfboro a couple of years ago, they had ties to, to Tuftonborough. Let major crimes come in, give them the key to that classroom and say, investigate to your heart's content. And you know, sir, you go throughout the state, that, that's how it's done. You want to, you want to set up a training session, for example, and say, okay, I'm going to be a little different in Tuftonborough. I'm going to start every year, have a training session at the school, but there's, there's a shooter. That room will pay for itself exponentially. And if, of course, if you sit there and say anything, there's going to be none of the hatefulness, you're being self-serving. No, you're not, sir. You stood there and, and been quiet and been polite and I'd say, thank you. For example, parking area, I'll take it with site size requirements. Page fifty-four, for every person using the building, you want point four or five spaces. When you have a building, you, you want it so, just like the school. Jim Bean, every other time, come around and plow, plow the snow around, takes him exactly four minutes. He doesn't hit anything. He liked the school, he pushes it away from the building. And if a fire truck has to get in or whatever, we had road agents before and you work here. No, I'm not going to call, follow up the police station until the end of the storm. Hey, the old cruisers got stuck. The other thing is, is this project here, there are four components. There's the building, I have absolutely no problem with it, they need the building. And it is very, it is serviceable and usable. It couldn't be bigger, but I understand money. The next thing is the site. The site needs to be maximized. There are fourteen ten-wheelers in this town that can haul three aggregate and fill in that ravine there. There's two people from the state that will design the car. There are three pits within bicycle distance here. There's a road project down the road, guy wants to get rid of about four truckloads of rocks. Okay? I went to two of the truckers and I said, Jim Bean charges eighty-five dollars to the town for his ten-wheeler. You charge two hundred dollars. Did you do it at the town rate? Can't afford to do it, boy. What if you did it at the town rate and then advertised like you did with the guy who built the two boat launches? And we write you a letter, thank you for the donation. Yeah, I do that, right? I can get five or six guys in town to do that. There's a guy right down the road that needs to update his frontage next to the fire station. Need to get that material and rocks out of there. There's two pits right around the corner on Federal Corner Road is also the, the aggregate. So we have building and site. I say, we get the site taken care of. We go to the two neighbors and we say, this is what we're going to do, but we're going to put a burn there to cut the noise down. And we get that off the table, just like we've got the purchase of the property off the table. And then it meets exactly what he says, it gets it down to where it's manageable. Town funding. Does anybody knows how to save money with these guys? Do they know? The last thing is the politics, excuse me, the next to last thing is the politics. Fifty people since town meeting have spoken to me. Not one of them hate the police. Not one of them hate you. And you know, Lloyd, we, we, we dug the, the, um, project across the street down, you know, the library. We got hit with this reveal, this really year to do it. We put more money aside. Now, one of them has been adversarial or hateful. The last thing is observation on my point. Jim Allen was the point man, was a citizen to help Adam Thompson. Skip Hurt was the point man for the library. Who can we recruit as a point man to help us with this project? I have five or six names I can, I can think of, but I won't say it publicly until I talk to them about it. Thank you for letting me speak.
I guess on two points, one, if everyone wants to speak openly for it, to decide on their own, our own, but we don't want. Secondly, on the filling of the ravine, are you suggesting we get a wetland still permit because that's what it's going to be? And I don't know how easy that is for us to secure right there.
I mean, gosh, our conservation people just got one for a parking lot.
They got a filling of a wetland for a parking lot?
No, they're doing the, the bridge and like a walkway through the Great Meadow Eastman.
Right, but the parking lot took, that's like, from that parking lot, they'd have to coordinate that, whether it's the Great Meadow.
I'm not saying it's impossible.
I, I can order. Yep, and, and I, it, it seems to me that the proposed building, as it's cited on the site over there, the needs, if you fill the ravine, you got more land to work with. But I, I, I don't see the benefit to, to doing it. And regardless of how inexpensive that additional work might be made, it's still an extra piece in the project, another moving part to have happen. And other than having more flat land there, I, I.
Well, maybe some more municipal parking would be good to have, but I'm not sure we need to include that in this project. We're not going to, trying to raise a million five. We're not quite there yet.
Can I mention the, I'm, I did speak to DOT and contrary to what my understanding was, they confirmed that you, we could get a second curve cut, that you could do a loop if, if that was the desire. But I would caution Phil that, I highlighted in the, so. This has been designated wetlands by HEB. Well, HEB designated wetlands on their drawing. I don't know if it was actually flagged, they're not, they didn't follow up on that. But if they're right, and they usually are, that's all wetlands. We'd already be altering that area, which you can get permitted for. And obviously there's drainage underneath the road that creates that, and that would have to be addressed. But to fill all that in, you'd have to replace it someplace else. But that's generally the only way you can fill wetland.
Offset.
Just offset. So it, it's a big chunk of.
HEB also talked about, hey, putting Bridget Culver in. You're still attacking the wetland.
Yeah.
Well, and, and that's feasible, but that, I, I, you're, you're still, you're bringing in a lot of fill to, to bring the grade back up or you're having a, a fairly deep dip. Again, they're, they're both feasible. I don't know that that's going to ease plowing any. It does give you that second egress exit if you need it. I'm, I'm not making a decision for you. It's obviously a town question. The chief felt that if, if this was blocked, this could be done in a fashion that he could just go, you know, over the.
Oh, I warned it here.
And it's maybe not the, a, a solution that you want to design to, but it's certainly something to, to consider. I, I, I just, I, we'll do however you want to go. And I don't know if now is the time to address all these points or we wait till it's done and then address all the points at the same time. But I just want to caution because that's obviously a, a big concern for you is maximizing on the use of the site. That in doing so, it's definitely going to affect the budget in, in numerous ways. And it's also going to have substantial impact on the property, which we'll have to deal with the state. And, and that was one thing we were trying to avoid because I'm sure everybody agrees. When you start dealing with DES, it's, it's a rea, a good reason for having it, but it's, it's a, it's difficult sometimes. So.
It adds complexity.
Adds.
Yeah. Well, we certainly have property enough we can designate for offset. But I think you're right. We need to take that into consideration when with everything else at the end of the day in September, let's say. And we bring this whole package together for a, a new go at town meeting. It would be nice to know whether or not there's the, that extra DOT money.
No, it's, I'm not exactly sure where the department it comes from, but it's sort of the same as.
Probably FEMA.
Well, it's, it's FEMA, but it's also Homeland Security or something like that. So it's kind of a combination of. And I, I'm aware most everybody who applies for it gets some, if not all, that they're applying for.
Well, from my perspective, fleshing out what it takes to get that and getting that process started sooner or later.
And get some idea of how much.
Again, not only parts, but another chunk of cash that helps pay for the project.
Right.
Is, is something that gets us that much closer to getting it done.
Right.
We can certainly get, start the process. Obviously, the town will have significant input in that. But then we'll need to get somebody to actually put a little more defined numbers each of the spaces that we want to claim as part of the EOC facility, because you're allowed, I'm not sure what the percentage is, but the, you can take a part of the construction cost for those spaces, even if they serve as something else most of the time. It's just the case with most EOC, you know, people don't build something.
And that makes it easier to justify spaces that I'm hearing are not justifiable. I mean, if we can, and Andy's done a good job with the other grants of, from that as well. But I mean, if, if somebody else is going to throw money in, or DOD or whoever it is, throws money in for this space here, then you don't get that space if you don't get the money. So it's a much easier sell. It's not the, I mean, the taxpayers are paying a hundred percent of the bill, but part of this being paid through our income taxes, which are going to Washington and then coming back. But it feels different, I think, for the general public, for Washington. It's Washington money or.
That's, that's right. Oh, yeah, free money. Yeah. Yeah.
And I'd like to get as much of that free money as we can because I certainly pay enough into that system.
Let me go around the table. Anything else, Phil?
No, I'm, I'm good. Anything else, Chief?
There was just one other thing I wanted to clarify. And we did go through the, I can't remember, IE, the police guideline. And I, and I would, I'd, I would be surprised if we met all the standards because we had to obviously, you know, five hundred square feet for, for storage, that's, that's an eighth of the building. And I don't know whether, I don't, I'm not, don't think that thing is updated regularly. So do they even consider how much is digitized? And that's based on presumably all paper, so, um, archiving. But that particular item and, and other items, based on the overall size of the building and what we came up with, the necessary store, um, program, we made some judgment calls on what, um, what is going to fit the budget and still satisfy the program of, of the building. So I, I'd be, like I said, I'd be surprised if we met all the criteria within that. We, I, I, we, I don't think we actually wrote down where we compromised and stuff, but.
Yes, as, as I went through it, your design and the design of the previous was, it's not extravagant.
And, and I guess. Electronics space, if we're going to get more into electronic storage of documents, we probably have to look at.
Well, I learned, I learned from the library people that when I sit there with my computer, take a few notes, they actually take up more space than years ago when I sat there with a book and a notebook. And that, that surprised me when I sat through it. The other thing is with the, uh, library, I passed away, but my college professor, I gave him a copy of, uh, Carla Lutens and Helen Hartshorn wrote. But every single question that anybody ever asked, seventy-five pages, they researched every single question. Over the years, when someone had a question, Dave Ford could just go, you know, page fifty-two. For example, there's a myth that people aren't reading books. You don't need a library. So that's not accurate.
Uh, back to this guideline from the piece of police. It's my guess, and I don't know it at all, but my guess is this is a, it, it, it's there to be kind of a one-size-fits-all, but you have a whole range of different situations and, and I suspect that a lot of what's in there is, is much more applicable to large departments.
No, that's not the case.
Then, okay, I, I.
If you have to have a handicap bathroom, a bathroom is the same size whether it's New York City or Tuftonborough. If you have a police cruiser that you need to get a prisoner out of, it's the same whether it's Wolfboro or Tuftonborough. If you want to have a Sallyport, you have to have so many square feet.
Right. Right, I'm, I'm, I was referring to some of the other.
You, you are correct. We don't have three shift commanders.
Right.
You're absolutely right there.
And, and, so I guess, I, I think it's, it's a good guideline to work with.
Yes. I, I guess on that same note, we don't even, we have no clue what, what sort of pushback there's going to be in our little teeny community here in the middle of New Hampshire on this current police issues that are going nationwide. I mean, we don't have a multiracial community, we don't have a lot of the issues, but maybe there'll be some pushback on spending money for the police, which I hope there isn't. But we need to be prepared for.
Of the people who shot me out, I didn't see them out, they came to me, you know, like they come, come to you. Was not one adversarial or ICA, or I have an agenda, or didn't even come close to that. They have a bunch of men and women that respect.
I just have one last point, question, point. We had mentioned when we had the conversation with, um, the grant funding about getting you our proposal finalized and, and issued for the, for your review and, and at least initially, um, and signed off. We wanted to go forward with that or are we kind of, I got an email, which rightly or wrongly read from Karen, that things might get pushed off another year, so we held off with the, um, with our proposal, but. Um, so I just wanted to clarify, should we, should we get that in sooner rather than later?
Is that the EOC grant?
No.
No, no.
It's a contract.
Agreement.
AIA, AIA contract.
Right, it's for our design team, work through the construction.
Right.
Process, design, the detail and construction process. And obviously, if the project doesn't go, whether you've signed it or not, if the project doesn't go forward, the contract's null and void. So, and that, that's not an issue.
And it doesn't really affect the ongoing work and what we're paying for.
So proposed to this contract?
It, yeah. What's that, I think?
Well, like.
Please draw, please draw something up?
Like I said in the email, um, the previous contract is basically done. And this is, we're just doing it because we want to be of service to get the project moving. So we understand that this is effective as a pro bono.
Maybe you need to bifurcate it a little bit, knowing that we've got fifty grants in the Warren article to do the design work currently. And maybe it's a, a matter of creating the finalized design and, and. the finalized design and, and some project cost, and then there's another part of the contract that's for the building and all the rest that's going forward. I mean, if you're concerned about getting paid for what we're gonna ask you to do between now and the end of September, then...
Well, if, if we're all in agreement that the, the schematic revisions will be subsequent to all the input, we're fine with that, it's just, it was a concern of doing it between every meeting, it's problematic, and I'm not sure we wanna do the proposal other than what we've already discussed, 'cause it complicates Andy's job to get that grant finalized, that they're expecting a contract...
They want a key contract.
And so...
So if that, if, if they need a contract, then we'll sign, sign another contract if we have to, to make the grant situation happen. That may be the, even if we push it off to twenty twenty-two, and you have to revise your architectural contract, to do that.
Yeah. From, from the budgetary standpoint, we have money budgeted this year to do the design work.
Yeah, fifty-four thousand dollars.
That is, um, gotta be associated with this contract. Contract's signed, we don't have to, we, we can carry that money over instead of next year, okay? As, as long as it's, it, it, yeah, we, we, we can accommodate the dollars from, from the budget, so if for some reason we, we're not gonna do the design work, balance it this year, but until after the first of the year, we have, we have money associated with it that we can carry over.
Right.
But it may change the cost of the contract, I, if, I, I don't know, is that...
Well, yeah, and that, the, the fifty-four thousand was based on the proposal, we need, uh, a previous, almost the estimate, but it wasn't a full-fledged proposal, but, uh, I think it was a proposal, we, we already had a contract, it was a proposal, so that included the whole design team, the structural M E P, um, and, and those numbers are basically set for that product. Any funds that we were to spend outside that contract, I would assume you can't fund from that.
Uh, if, if it's, if it's additional to that, then we have to find money someplace else to do it, if, if it's an addition to what's there, right?
I'd have to look at the Warren article, I'm not sure if the, the Warren article is specific language.
Well, no, no, what, what, but, but, right, but what you're saying is, the, the money that's there is associated with this piece of work, if there's additional work that needs additional funding beyond that, then we need, we need to find it, we need to find the money to do it.
Right, I, I don't think we can start using that lump sum of money for anything that we do prior to the, the start of that contract, um, so, like, what we do up till now, up until that contract goes into effect, um, I don't think you could fund it from that money.
Well, the Warren article says, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of fifty-four thousand dollars for development of architectural plans and cost of the building improvement, that's pretty open-ended.
Yeah, but, right, so, so we're, we're, we're not constrained in terms of how we use that money.
Right, but you've given us an estimate of fifty-four for doing a certain amount of work.
Right.
And if we add to that, we need to add money to the pot.
Right. And I'm not saying that we necessarily will, uh, we're happy to continue what we're doing right now, and then at the end of the information sessions, we sit down and agree what we're gonna implement, and that will be where our contract gets, if we start the next contract starts, and if we don't take that all the way through to construction drawings, so be it, we don't get paid for what we don't do, but, um...
Yeah, development of architectural plans, I mean, that says it all for me, we need to dip into that money to take this ongoing...
I remember when we researched with D R A, with wording of that, uh, lawyer, asked some of these questions, specifically the number, you know, be broad and flexible, so that will meet your needs, his needs, and our needs. I'm confident that we're past those, okay?
Yeah. I'm fine with it.
Sir? The pandemic is over, we'll be able to shake your hand.
We're all happy. So, so, we wanna hit the chief with speed limits before he leaves.
You can touch him up anything you want.
All right, there's some question about County Road and New Road not being posted?
There's no signs on it.
Okay, so, can...
So, so do we need to put signs up?
Um, somebody did ask about signs, even without signs, statute's thirty-five, law says it's thirty-five in any rural road, we go, if we deviate from that, we're supposed to do a study of sorts, to verify that thirty-five or whatever speed we're wanting to change to, eighty-fifth percentile, um, I guess it's, as far as I'm concerned, it's thirty-five, so it doesn't matter, but I do have a citizen on...
This, and that's, we don't have a notice requirements to drivers, which is thirty-five miles a mile.
Thirty-five by statute, unless it's posted otherwise.
With your recommendations?
Um, I'm, I'm fine with it not being posted, but I, I guess that I did have a citizen ask about it, um, I don't know that we've had, uh, anybody really challenge, I mean, either road, per se, I mean, we've, we have stop cars on them, but I don't know that we have, uh...
Can't imagine driving one with thirty-five, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, there is the hill coming straight towards, if you're heading north on County Road, right?
Yeah.
Well, there's almost three, if you count the dirt separate from the pavement, but coming down that hill, you could probably, but you have a stop sign at the end, you need to stop for, and F heads complained to our speeders there, more particularly though is, it was New Road's the one that the person complained about, um, no speed signs, but it's not required, obviously if they're put up, there's a cost, and you have to maintain them, and that all becomes a, a, considerations, where they go and how to make...
How many roads are there on New Road? Three?
Uh, it's probably six or seven houses, plus you've got mountain shadows off it, but one of those houses is coming down, Dolly's house, coming down, so...
Could this be a, uh, a possibility, or courtesy, you get back to the person and says, you know, it's a spotless decision, um, it might recommendation, if you'd like to go see them, take an appointment, or send them a letter, or...
Yeah, send us, and we'll, we'll include it in next year's budget, I mean, I don't wanna start...
We, we have lots of roads in town that don't have speed limit signs on, right?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's...
So, if, if we say, okay, we're gonna put one on New Road, and then somebody says, well, I live on this road, and I don't have a speed limit sign.
And then you get the guy that lives on Ledchill Road, that says there's thirty-five mile an hour speed limit, and everybody drives fifty.
Yeah.
I wanna cop on my road.
The other issue, well, High Street doesn't have anything, and then the argument is, well, if I turn off High Street, do I need one there? I mean, I, I, it's thirty-five.
Well, the law also says what's reasonable and prudent.
Reasonable and prudent, primipati is thirty-five.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it, we beat this horse today.
I doubt it, I rarely get above thirty on New Road.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably like, sit right on my, sit right on my bumper.
Okay, good.
Just a little excuse.
Thanks for coming in.
Gentlemen, thank you for your time and energy.
How about I, you got Travis safe?
He's safe. Is there anything else to come through the board?
Uh, we have a non-public to do, but, uh...
Oh, I did, I did not know that.
Oops.
Well, you got, uh, attorneys, uh...
Oh, right, yeah, I put it on Monday, but yeah, we can do it again, yeah.
I'd say, let's take five minutes and do it today.
Make the appropriate motion.
Yep, uh, so I move that we go into non-public for, uh, ninety-three A, Roman two, something Perrin L for legal.
For legal?
Yep.
Uh, second?
With yes.
Mark is a yes.
Oh, the yes.
Are recordings and machines off?
Not yet.